Welcome. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
How's everybody doing this beautiful day? All right, well, let's try to make record time and get out of here quickly so we can enjoy the rest of the afternoon. Welc- [laughing] A second, there we go, very nice. So first off, my name is Brian Frye, I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission, welcome to the Thursday, May 8th meeting. First order of business is opening announcements. Roll the tape.
Before we begin the agenda, the Wichita Sedgwick County Metropolitan Area Planning Commission and the Wichita Sedgwick County Board of Zoning Appeals would like to take this opportunity to welcome everyone to this public hearing. For those in attendance, copies of the agenda for today's meeting, the public hearing procedure, and planning department staff reports on all agenda items are available in the lobby. The planning commissions and the BZAs bylaws limit the applicant on a zoning, subdivision, or variance application, and his or her representatives to a total of 10 minutes of speaking time at the start of the hearing on that item, plus up to two minutes at the conclusion of that hearing. All other persons wishing to speak on agenda items are limited to three minutes per person. However, if they feel that it is needed and justified, the chairman may extend these times by up to two minutes. All speakers are requested to state his or her name and address for the record when beginning to speak. When you are finished speaking, please share your name, address, and the case number on the sheet provided in the room. This will enable staff to notify you if there are any additional proceedings concerning that item. All speakers at the podium, please remove your face mask before speaking into the microphone. Please note that all written and visual materials you present to the commission and the board will be retained by the secretary as part of the official record. If you are not speaking, but you wish to be notified about future proceedings on a particular case, please provide your contact information to the planning department. The planning commission and the board are interested in hearing the views of all persons who wish to express themselves on all the agenda items. However, we ask that all speakers, please be as courteous and concise as possible and avoid long repetitions of facts or opinions which have already been stated. For your information, the Wichita City Council has adopted a policy for all city zoning items. A copy of this policy is available from the planning staff. The city council relies on a written record of the planning commission hearings and does not conduct its own additional public hearings on these items. The decision of the BZA is final. Any appeal of a decision of the BZA is to the district court.
All right, next item of business is roll call, Mr. Wadel.
Yes, sir. Frye.
Present.
Mater.
Present.
McKay.
Present.
Dool.
Here.
Bill Johnson.
Present.
Hi.
Here.
Nix is absent. Clontz.
Here.
Warren.
Here.
Joe Johnson.
Here.
Miles.
Present.
Zimbalman.
Here.
Aldrich.
Here.
Williams Bay.
Here.
Sorry, I show 13 members are present.
All right, thank you. Next item is 1.3, the approval of the MAPC meeting minutes from April 24th.
Move for approval.
Second.
I show that commission members Frye, Hi, and Clontz were not present. We have a motion by Commissioner Joe Johnson and a second by Commissioner Miles. Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Abstain, Frye.
Abstain.
Aye. You going abstain?
Oh, well, since you weren't here, normally you abstain.
Okay.
No, abstain.
Gotcha, thank you. You're the newbie, so I got to break you in. All right, so motion approves 10-0 with three abstentions. Next is item 1.4, determination of MAPC consent items. So we'll go through the agenda to see if anyone on the commission wants to hear these or anyone from the public. First is item 2.1, subdivision 2025-18, preliminary plat for Willow Springs, 2nd Edition, 73rd Street North and North 87th Street West. Anyone on the commission wants to hear this case? Seeing none, anyone from the public would like to hear this case? Seeing none, we'll move item 2.1 to consent.
Move to approve Agenda Item 2.1.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Miles with a second by Commissioner Williams Bay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion approved unanimously. Now the vacation items. Item 3.1, Vacation 2025-12. This is roughly North Webb Road and East 29th Street North. Anyone on the commission like to hear this case? Seeing none, is there anyone on, from the public that would like to hear this case? Seeing none, we'll move item 3.1 to consent. Item 3.2 is Vacation 2025-13, roughly East Central Avenue and North Greenwich Road, a drain easement. Anyone on the commission care to hear this case? Seeing none, anyone from the public care to hear this case? Seeing none, we'll move item 3.2 to consent. Item 3.3 has been deferred. Entertain a motion.
Move to appro-
[laughing]
Move to approve item 1, 2.1, 3.2.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Williams Bay and the second by Commissioner Miles. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion approved unanimously. Now we have public hearing items. 4.1, Con 2025-60 for accessory apartment in Derby, Greenwich Road, and East 79th Street South. Anyone on the commission care to hear this case? Seeing none, anyone from the public care to hear this case? Seeing none, we'll move item 4.1 to consent. 4.2 has been withdrawn. 4.3 is the CUP 2025-14 for a personal improvement services CUP amendment, East 21st Street North and North Webb Road. Anyone on the commission care to hear this case? Seeing none, anyone from the public care to hear this case? Seeing none, we'll move item 4.3 to consent. 4.4 has been deferred to May 22nd. 4.5, staff is recommending denial, so we will hear 4.5. 4.6 has been withdrawn. 4.7 is a zone change, Zone 2025-13 with a conditional use request. This is West St. Louis and Northwest Street. Anyone on the commission care to hear this case? Seeing none, anyone from the public care to hear this case? Seeing none, we'll move item 4.7 to consent. Item 4.8, staff is recommending denial, so we will hear that case. Item 4.9, Zone 2025-15, a zone change request from SF5 to GC, East Central Avenue and North Greenwich Road. Anyone on the commission care to hear this case? Seeing none, anyone from the public care to hear this case? We do have a member of the public would like to hear item 4.9, so we will hear that case. Item 4.10, Zone 2025-16, a zone change request from SF5 to GC. Uh, I'm sorry, let me state that again. Zone change request from SF5 and GC to CBD, West Maple and South Osage Street. Anyone on the commission care to hear this case? Seeing none, anyone from the public care to hear this case? Seeing none, we'll move item 4.10 to consent.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Move to approve Item 4.1, 4.3, 4.7, and 4.10.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve consent items from Commissioner Bill Johnson with a second by Commissioner John McKay. All in, yes, sir?
Mr. Chair, is that per staff comment or per staff recommendations?
Do you agree with the staff recommendations on all the consent items?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, and just to be clear, I make sure everybody heard them, it was 4.1, 4.3, 4.7, and 4.10. And we have a second by Commissioner McKay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. All right, so before we hear these items, now we have to recess to the BZA appeals agenda. So the first item for that is approval of the prior BZA meeting minutes from April 24th. I show that Frye, Hi, and Clontz were absent.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Williams Bay with a second by Commissioner Miles. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All abstain, Frye.
Abstain.
And Hi. So, motion passes 10-0 with three abstentions. Item 2 is BZA 2025-19, a variance request in the city to allow roof sign. Five criteria not met, and I think staff, Christina, is going to present.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. Christina Reese with Planning Staff, here to present BZA 2025-00019. The applicant for this case is requesting a variance to the Wichita Sign Code to allow a roof sign on a structure zoned CBD Central Business District. This is a .14 acre property. It is also listed on the National Register of Historic Places, located on the southwest corner of West Douglas Avenue and South Broadway. Section 24.04.197 of the Sign Code has restrictions for signs permitted in the CBD zoning district. Item 3, which is listed in your staff report, specifically prohibits rooftop signs unless approved by a variance. And so the request for the roof sign is what is triggering the variance application. The proposed sign measures 10 feet by 10 feet and will be installed by bolting internal supports to the building's existing I-beams. The proposed sign will be internally illuminated with white LEDs and an aluminum backing. The design of the requested signage was previously approved by the Wichita Historic Preservation Board because it is listed on the National Register of Historic Places and is subject to Kansas State Preservation Law. There are several downtown buildings that exhibit roof signs. Two recent examples are the Fidelity Bank, located on the east side of South Market Street, and on the north side of East Waterman Street. Then there's an additional roof sign at the Kansas College of Osteopathic Medicine, directly south of the subject site, on the northwest corner of South Broadway and East William. So the purpose of the variance is requested to install a roof sign on the building for wayfinding and identification. And all surrounding properties are zoned CBD Central Business District. A little bit of case history, this was platted in 1871, listed on the Wichita Register of Historic Places in 1980, the National Register of Historic Places in 2007, and the Historic Preservation Board approved the existing signs that do not require a variance on the front and side facades of the building. So let's go forward with the criteria for granting a variance. I'm just going to go over the ones that staff is in agreement with. One, the variance requested arises from a condition that is unique to the property and is not created by an action of the property owner or the applicant, and that the building in question is located in a unique situation where visibility from surrounding areas is limited by the layout and surrounding infrastructure. The granting of the variance will not adversely affect the rights of the adjacent property owners. The sign will be carefully designed and positioned in a manner that minimizes any potential impacts on the views, privacy, or aesthetic quality of adjacent properties. Four, skipping ahead, the variance will not adversely affect the public health, safety, morals, order, convenience, prosperity, general welfare, or harmonious development of the community. The applicant states that the proposed sign is designed to comply with all relevant safety regulations and will not present any risks to the public health, safety, or general welfare. Criteria five, the granting of the variance will not be opposed to the general spirit and intent of the Sign Code. The applicant states that the intention of the applicable zoning code is to regulate signs in a way that ensures that they are both functional and aesthetically appropriate for the area. Where staff does not agree is criteria on three, which is that the strict application of the provisions of the Sign Code would constitute an unnecessary hardship on the applicant. The applicant states that the property owner would face an undue hardship if the variance were not granted, as the inability to place the sign in the requested location would severely hinder the building's ability to effectively advertise and identify the establishment. Strict adherence to the current code would mean that a significant portion of the building's occupants and visitors would have difficulty locating the building or recognizing it from a distance, which is critical for operational purposes and the success of the business. Given the unique architectural features of the building and its location, it would be a significant challenge to find an alternative placement for the sign. So staff believes that the site already features a total of four building signs that are on, and this is a typo here, it should be the north and east facades, not the south, which are designed for wayfinding and identification. It is staff's opinion that the strict application of the code will still allow the business to effectively advertise and allow patrons to identify the establishment. So the recommendation of staff is that the variance to allow for one roof sign does not meet the five criteria required to grant a variance. Should the board determine that all five conditions necessary for the granting of the variance can be found to exist, it is a recommendation that the following variance shall be granted with the following conditions, and those are listed in your staff report. So let's go through some of the site photos, please.
Also, I need to let the record reflect that Commissioner Nix has now joined the meeting.
This is looking south towards the site. I got as close to the sidewalk as possible, it is a very tall building, I just couldn't get it all in one shot, so let's go to the next slide, please. This is looking west towards the site, again, very tall building. Next slide, please. This is looking north away from the site. And next slide, please. This is looking east away from the site. And with that, I will stand for questions.
Thank you, Christina. Commissioner Aldrich.
Thank you. Christina, thanks for your, your presentation. I, what bothers me a little bit in staff report, you clearly state that even though you're recommending for denial on this, that there are several downtown buildings that exhibit the rooftop, and you gave several examples of some prominent businesses and buildings there. The only criteria that staff is, have as an issue, has got to be with whether or not it be a hardship if it wasn't allowed. But yet, the rest of the criteria is staff is a recommendation on. You know, firstly, I just think that's a little weak argument on why staff is looking or recommending denial on this, especially where you see other buildings that are allowed it in the immediate area.
I understand. So when we were looking at, or when I was looking at the signage for these buildings, such as Fidelity, Dabank, and the Kansas College of Osteopathic Medicine, the Kansas College of Osteopathic Medicine has a blade sign on the corner, and then the one with Fidelity, there was no other existing signage at the time.
Okay, I, again, I still think that the only reason is, is a weak reason, it's just my, my opinion.
Understood, thank you.
Christina, of the, the staff report on criteria three, it mentions that the site has total of four building signs existing. This is the one on the north in this picture, correct?
Yes.
Are there any-
It should be south facing or north, yes.
Right, are there any at the height of the rooftop on this building, or are they all lower, like this one?
They are all within the first couple stories.
Okay. So the difference being is that the other buildings that we're referring to, theirs were more rooftop signs, correct?
Correct, those are rooftop signs that were granted a variance.
All right, thank you. Any other questions from the commission? Seeing none, we'll ask the applicant to come forward. Are they here? Okay. Sir, please come to the podium, you'll have 10 minutes to address the criteria number three, which is where the staff is not finding an agreement. You don't need to address items 1, 2, 4, and 5, since they're in agreement. So if you could focus your comments on item three, that would be great. You'll have up to 10 minutes. Give us your name and address for the record, please.
I'm David Branson.
Can you move the microphone a little closer to your face?
David Branson.
Thank you.
I'm with Dynamic Sign Solutions, we're at 800 West Maple. She's going to give you a handout. We just have a response to that. I can just read it to you, basically. The site currently includes two building signs on the north facade, one canopy sign on the east elevation, and a building sign at the west entrance exit, that's down underneath where they, where they come in, Valet Park. Anyways, at present, there are no identifying signs on the south elevation at all. We are requesting approval for a roof sign on this side, as it is essential for visibility from Kellogg. The Historical Society has approved the proposed roof sign, acknowledging that it aligns with the building's overall aesthetic and supports the reservation of its architectural integrity while minimizing structural impact. The surrounding area is heavily populated with hotels, all of which feature signage facing Kellogg. Without the requested variance, AC Hotel would be at a competitive disadvantage compared to the neighboring establishments. I mean, that's, that's about it. They want something that you could see on the south side of the building, they don't have anything there at all. No other place to put it, unless it could be down on the wall and we'd have to do penetrations through the wall, and I don't know that the Historical Society would like that either. And I don't know that you could actually see that from Kellogg even. But where this is, I went up on Kellogg and you can see that, you can see the top of that, you don't, still got it up, you can see the top of that elevator shaft where the sign was set.
Mr. Branson, if the board decides that your testimony is in conformance with the criteria, staff is recommending conditions, do you agree to those conditions?
Yeah.
Which the sign shall be constructed in substantial conformance with the approved site plan and conceptual images, the sign shall conform to all requirements of Section 24.04.220I, or J, the Sign Code, and a signed permit shall be obtained?
Right.
You agree with all those?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Any other questions from the commission?
Could we see, could we see that south face again? Could we have a picture of that put up?
We're waiting on, there we go. Is that the one?
That's it, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Branson, stand by, as we'll wait to see if there's any public testimony.
Okay.
Anyone from the public want to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for discussion, unless you have a question, Commissioner Aldrich. You're fine, sir, thank you.
All right, thank you.
We'll bring it back to the board for discussion. Commissioner Aldrich?
Yeah, I was going to make a motion that we approve the variance to allow the roof sign based on all five criterias. Second.
And referencing the testimony that was given related to the third criteria as new evidence as to why we agree?
Yes, that's, I was going to-
Why you agree?
I was going to finish that up, that, including number three, that with the additional testimony that I agree that it would be a hardship.
Yeah, we just have to be able to state that all five conditions are necessary for the granting based on this additional testimony. So, and I think we're all in agreement.
So, Mr. Chair, is the finding that all five criteria have been met in the motion?
That's what his motion is saying.
Yeah, that's what my motion is.
And we have a second from Commissioner Hi, so. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item three, BZA 2025-21, for a variance request to reduce setback and side setback. And I believe this is Brad.
Yes, thank you, Brad Etherly, Planning Staff, presenting case BZA 2025-00021. For this case, the applicant is requesting three items. One, a variance to reduce the rear setback from three feet to six inches to allow two existing sheds to come into conformance. Two, a variance to reduce the interior side setback from five feet to six inches to allow an existing shed to come into compliance. Number three, a variance to reduce a building setback from three feet to six inches to allow an existing carport to come into compliance. Two, cinder block sheds were built on this property by the applicant that were placed too close to the rear property line, and then one was also built too close to the interior side property line. According to the UCC, the shed in the southwest corner of the property should have been placed at least three feet from the interior side property line, and at least five feet from the rear property line. The shed that was built in the middle of the back of the property should be at least five feet from the rear property line. The sheds were built within approximately six inches of the interior side property line and the rear property line, and we'll, we'll go into some site pictures that will clear some of that up as well. And then additionally, according to the city's Public Works and Utilities Department, there is a 16-foot utility easement centered on the rear property line. This would prohibit any building being built or placed within eight feet of the rear property line. The city's Utility Department has indicated that instead of asking the owner to move the buildings, it would require the applicant to pay for a permit to keep the buildings in place. However, if the city does need access to the sewer main, they have the authority to access the main by any means they deem necessary. Then additionally, according to the Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department, the applicant would need a building permit for a carport. The carport was built roughly one foot away from the primary building. That was, the applicant claims was built about 10 years ago. Planning staff has been in communication with the MABCD regarding the carport. It's MABCD stance that the carport was constructed without a permit. In order to attach the carport to the primary building, a stamped structural engineer, engineer report is required, but then no variance would be required. If it remains unattached, it will still need the stamped structural engineer report, as well as the variance to reduce the setback between building and structure from three feet to one foot. The property is surrounded on all sides by the SF5 Single Family District, is developed with single-family dwellings, as you can see by the zoning map. On May 25th, 1920, the subject site was platted as part of the Jones Park Edition to North Wichita, and there are no other zoning cases associated with this property. I'll go through the five criteria for granting a variance. Number one, the request is unique to the property and was not created by the applicant. The applicant states that, "I request a variance related to a shed and carport that I built on my property approximately 10 years ago. At the time of construction, I was unaware of the permitting process and did not know that I needed to apply for a permit. Due to the small size of my property, the additional structures were necessary to keep my tools organized and secure and to help me operate efficiently." Staff does not agree with the request that is unique to the property and was not created by the applicant. Subject site is .22 acres in size and has plenty of room to place the buildings outside of the setbacks required by the UCC. Additionally, insufficient knowledge of the code does not permit the applicant to not follow the code. Number two, the granting of the variance will not adversely affect the rights of the adjacent property owners or residents. The applicant did not provide response for this criterion. Staff believes that the variance could negatively affect the rights of adjacent property owners. It appears that at least one eve of one of the sheds overhangs the property line, which could add water runoff into the neighbor's property. If the carport was not constructed or placed properly, it could damage adjacent property's owner's property. Number three, the strict application of the provisions of the zoning code would constitute an unnecessary hardship on the applicant. Again, the applicant did not provide a response to this. Again, the applicant did not provide a response to this. Staff does not believe that moving the existing sheds could constitute a financial hardship on the applicant, as both sheds are built with cinder block material with concrete foundations. I think I may have said staff does not believe, staff does believe that. The applicant could remove the carport or attach it to the principal building. Criteria four, the variance will not adversely affect the public health, safety, morals, order, convenience, prosperity, general welfare, or harmonious development of the community. Again, the applicant did not respond to that. Staff does believe that the granting of the variance could affect the public health, safety, moral, order, convenience, prosperity, general welfare, or harmonious development of the community. The placing of the sheds so close to the property lines could be considered unsightly by the neighbors, and if the carport was not constructed or placed properly on the property, it could be a safety hazard to navy, neighboring properties. And then lastly, the granting of the variance will not be opposed to the general spirit and intent of the UZC. Again, the applicant did not respond to this. Staff does not agree. The proposed variance does not uphold the spirit and intent of the code. The general spirit and intent of the Unified Zoning Code is to promote compatible land use patterns and to establish development standards for each zoning district. Allowing two sheds and a carport to be placed where they are would oppose the general spirit and intent of the UZC. If we can go to site pics. So this is looking north into the property on, on the driveway where the carport is. You can see that the carport is unattached and is roughly about a foot away from the primary residence. Next picture. This is looking in the backyard of the property where the two sheds are, have been built. Next property, next picture. This is looking east away from the site. Next picture. This is looking north away from the site. Next picture. This is looking south away from the site. Next picture. This is looking west into the site. Next picture. So this is looking at the rear property line. This is gonna be looking at the shed that is kind of in the southwest corner. So you can see that if the fence is on the property line, that it is very close to that property line. Next picture. And this is looking at the other shed with the rear property line again. Lots of stuff back there, so it was hard to get a good picture, but you can see the edge of the, the shed here compared to the fences. Next picture. And this is, again, the southwest shed in the corner. You can see that it is also very close to this, this fence line, if that's on the property line. And then also, it appears that that eve may be hanging over, if not, it's very close. So, I believe that was the last picture. So the recommendation of staff is the variance to reduce the interior side setback from six feet to six inches and the rear setback from three feet to six inches for the two storage sheds, and to reduce the required separation of an accessory structure from a primary structure from three feet to one foot does not meet the five criteria required to grant a variance. Should the board determine that all five conditions necessary to the granting of the variance can be found to exist, is the recommendation that variances for the reduction in the interior side setback, the rear setback, and the required separation of an accessory structure from a primary structure are granted with the conditions that are listed in the staff report. And with that, I can stand for any questions.
Thank you, Brad. Commissioner Hicks. Hicks. I said Hicks. I meant Nix. Really upset me.
Brad, do you have any idea whether the chain link fence and, and/or the board fence are on the property line? Is there any way to know?
There's no real way to know without having a survey done, but I would imagine that both of them are pretty close to the property line.
Any other questions? Commissioner Haunson, Johnson, I'm kidding.
Our port is connected with the house on-
Mr. Johnson, can you please use your microphone?
Sorry. Is the carport connected with the house on the left?
It is. So it is on that property, yeah. It is, it is not attached to the house, but it is connected in relation to this, this house, yes.
Commissioner Williams-Bay.
Yeah, and does that, it appears that it's over the property line on the other side too, isn't it? Or not?
I don't believe that it is. I think that there's actually, if you go back to the aerial view, there is enough room from the property line to the edge of the carport that they would not need a variance for that side setback if they were to attach it to the primary structure. The problem is, is that in order to get a building permit for it, they have to provide a structural report, which they either don't have or are saying it's hard to get. They can talk more about that. Then they could move the carport three feet from the primary structure, but then they would need to get the variance from the side yard setback. So they've decided to keep it where it is and ask for the variance from the primary building. Does that make sense?
Now, on the shed, the water now drains onto the neighbor's property. Is that right?
I can't, I can't say that for certain.
Okay.
It just, and, you know, we do allow eaves to hang into the setbacks, but with the wall being so close to the property line, it does appear from being out there that the eve does go over the, the property line, but I, I can't state that for certain.
Any other questions from the commission? Seeing none, we'll ask the applicant and/or agent to come forward. Are you present?
Yes.
All right. Please come to the microphone and identify yourself as either applicant or agent. Give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have 10 minutes.
I'm just an agent. My name is Daniel Chamberlain, 349 South Brookside. I'm representing Cesar Martinez, just translating for him.
Thank you.
As far as the shed, we couldn't get a structural engineer when he constructed or built it years ago. They didn't give him a plan for that, so he doesn't have a structural engineer per se as far as being unattached or being able to be constructed that. But, I mean, it's held this long in Kansas weather. We don't believe it's gonna be burdened to anybody. As far as the runoff, I know it's close to the edge of the neighbor's property, but there hasn't been any significant, like I said, downfall or rain or anything that has been damaging to that property. As far as the eaves on the rear shed, we don't, we can't say, I don't know how far or water, if it's gonna be any damage into the neighbor's property to the, I believe it's to the south, the south shed.
So, he said the first shed, he didn't know about the property lines and constructing of where they needed to go. So the first one here, the one that has the colored block in the front, he built eight years ago. He was just trying to leave himself enough room in the backyard that he still can manage to do what he does back there and, and just be as tight as closest within the property line, but he didn't know about the guidelines as far as building them. And he uses the, the buildings he built because his, his house is only about 800 square feet, the original home. And so he's using these as a, as like a storage for his clothes and for his utilities, I mean, not utilities, but his lawnmower and equipment for his yards and things. So basically, it's like his closet, one of the sheds. He's stating that he, like I said, he didn't know about the permits or the guidelines as far as going as far as, as close, or that there was a guideline to be so close to the property. We just recommend that we allow the properties to stand and if we need to pay- What do you call it? So he asked the, the commission if, you know, if we can keep the structures and pay the permit fees to keep them there.
Your client also understand that because of the utility easement, that if the Utility Department needed to access it, they could remove the buildings by any means necessary?
He understands that, yes, if it had to come to or the city had to have access in there, and it's a necessity to tear down the buildings, then yes, he understands that. But other than that, if, if there was no utility problems, he would, you know, ask if you guys could leave the structures up.
Any other commission, commissioners have questions?
Um, as far as the carport, where, where he purchased and where he got it, like I said, they didn't give him a structural design of it and never told him that, you know, he, you need to do this, or you need to mount it, or have it so close to this. So, we didn't, like I said, he doesn't have a structural engineer to have it, pass on it.
Seeing no other questions from the commission right now. Thank you. We'll see if there's any comments from the public. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item? Yes, ma'am. Please go to the podium. Yes, to the podium. Give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to three minutes.
My, my name is Faith Lautermilks. My address is 3141 North Park Place, one of the, one of my residences.
Can you point to it on the map using the cursor? Your residence?
Okay, my three minutes will be up by the time I figure that out from this.
I'll give you some allow. We haven't start, we stopped the clock. Are you right next door to the-
I'm right next door to the north of him.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, as far as, I, I don't know whether he wants to move the carport to the south or to the north, but if he wants to move it to the north, that, underneath that carport, and as far as that goes, his whole driveway is a never-ending weekend party every single weekend, and it already hinders the sleep. And moving it more towards our property would do that even more, and I'm sure that he's not concerned with the roof being over the property line at all. Another thing is, if it were to, to be moved towards our property more, their leaves already get blown on the other side of the driveway towards my yard, and, and we've raked his leaves for 18 years, and he's been violent towards my husband with, over it, him and his son and his dad all at the same time. I've pulled up to my house and seen it, and it's, it's, he's a horrible neighbor, and I don't believe he deserves to move that. He laughed in my face when my daughter passed away. He did, he did things, he caught, roosterfied it over at my grandma's vacant property, but they had to have $900, which nowadays is about $2,000. I know you're, we're not here for that, but my grandma was, wasn't able to pay it, and we had to pay it, and both properties were behind in taxes when we came back, and we just never did get it paid up and fixed at the same time, and we lost it because of that. He thinks everything's funny, so. I had something else to say about that carport, but I've got, so I've got enough space on the south side of my house to where if I wanted to put a driveway to, to the back, I could, as long as I complied with codes. And I'm worried that I couldn't do that if he was allowed to move it further to the My grandmother didn't know they were roosterfiding over there. She thought they were partying, which she's a geriatric, she was geriatric, she didn't want to confront anybody. They threw their trash over there. They throw their trash out towards my yard now. They've always have, always have, and he thinks it's funny. And his son has grown up disrespecting me as well, and actually stole my debit card one time, tried to order pizza from a motel.
Okay, ma'am, your time is up.
Thank you.
Any questions for the speaker?
I have a lot more, babe.
I understand.
Yeah, I just, I think I missed, how long have you lived there?
All my whole entire life. My grandparents raised me in that home.
Thank you.
Any other public speakers? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for discussion, consideration?
Rebuttal.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. We have a opportunity for rebuttal. So, applicant and agent, Mr. Cumberland?
Yes.
You can, you have up to two minutes to rebut the speaker's comments if you so wish. Chamberlain, I said, Cumberland, I apologize. I'm having a horrible time with names today. Apologize.
He is a, he's saying he's a person of heart? He's never discriminated, he's equal as everybody? For everything that he has? He's never, never- Never did he disrespect on the death of, of her daughter, like she's speaking? For as bad as she can be? Because she is the most problematic neighbor in the neighborhood. He said that she reports to the police so many times that they don't even attend to her calls. Everything else, he just apologizes.
Thank you. Any questions for the speakers? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. Thank you, sir. All right. Yes, Commissioner Aldrich?
Yep, it's, apparently there's some bad blood between the two. That's got nothing to do with what this case is or what it's about. I'd like to make a motion that we uphold staff recommendations of denial based on all five of the criterias as given.
Second.
All right, okay. We have a motion to accept staff recommendation for denial by Commissioner Aldrich, with the second by Commissioner Miles. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion to deny approved unanimously. All right, so now we are recess, or, sorry. We are recessing the, we're just, no, not even recessing, we're, we're closing the Board of Zoning Appeals agenda, and we will go back to regular planning commission items, which is item 4.5.
Mr. Chair, I will be abstaining from this item.
Okay. For the record, Commissioner Clontz is abstaining from item 4.5, and this is PUD 2025 dash five. Brad?
Yes, thank you again, Brad Etherly, Planning Staff. We are now discussing case PUD 2025 dash zero 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 five. This case, the applicant is requesting an amendment to the Fairmount Commons PUD number 78 to permit an illuminated building sign that is greater than 15 inches in height. The subject site is .43 acres in size and is generally located on the, located on the east side of North Fairmount Avenue and within 350 feet south of East 17th Street North, which is at 1728 North Fairmount, Fairmount Avenue. The subject site is currently developed, developed as a multifamily dwelling on the Evenlots 22 through 30 of parcel one. The proposed amendment would only apply to the subject building as described above. The applicant is requesting to amend the existing- The applicant is requesting to amend the existing sign provision for PUD number seventy-eight, which currently state that signs are per, permitted under the current sign code of the City of Wichita, as per B multifamily residential zoning district, and that B LED and/or electronic message center signs are prohibited on all parcels, and any request to permit such signs shall be approved by an amendment to the PUD instead of an administrative adjustment. The sign code for the City of Wichita states that signs in all districts are permitted, identification signs when consisting of letters fifteen inches or less in height. And the applicant is requesting that PUD number seventy-eight permit one four-foot by fifty-foot LED illuminate, illuminated sign on the north elevation above the third floor windows. This would allow a building sign with letters that are three point two times the height permitted by the sign code. Uh, building sign that is backlit illuminated with LEDs is not considered an LED sign as prohibited by item B in the PUD. In twenty twenty, the Wichita City Council approved the current PUD number seventy-eight, uh, permitting the following development standards of fifty, fifty multifamily dwelling units on point six eight acres, zero-foot building setbacks along East Sixteenth Street and North Vassar Avenue, a maximum height of thirty-eight feet, um, and a risk, a reduced parking ratio of point eight parking spaces per dwelling unit, ten bicycle racks installed on the site, and screening and landscaping per the UZC and the Wichita Landscape Ordinance. In twenty twenty-two, the Wichita City Council approved an amendment to PUD number seventy-eight that expanded the boundaries of parcel one and added a parcel two. It also prohibited LED and EMC signs and required an amendment in order to permit such signs. As part of the case review, planning development staff detected a site visit and discovered that the dwell apartment building located on the east side of the PUD, uh, parcel one, located at seventeen seventeen North Vassar Avenue, has a building sign installed that exceeds that which is permitted by the PUD text, and it was determined that there, that no permits were approved in order to install the, the sign there. The current application does not include permitting this sign at seventeen seventeen North Vassar, and the applicant would be required to take separate action in order to request, to request permitting for that existing sign. If we can go to the zoning map? The character of the neighborhood is mostly multifamily residential, with several surface area parking lots that serve Wichita State University nearby. Property to the north is zone B multifamily residential, and is developed, developed with a multifamily dwelling. Property to the east is zone PUD seventy-eight, and is developed with a multifamily dwelling. Property to the south is zone B, and is developed with a group residence, and properties to the west across North Fairmount Avenue are zone B, and developed with a duplex and parcel two of PUD number seventy-eight, and is developed with a surface area parking lot. On February fourteenth, eighteen eighty-seven, the site was platted as part of the Fairmount addition. In twenty twenty, the PUD was approved creating the Vassar Apartments PUD number seventy-eight, and in twenty twenty-two, um, a PUD application was approved that, uh, renamed the PUD to the Fairmount Commons PUD number seventy-eight, and then expanded the footprint of parcel one, added parcel two, and prohibited those LED and EMC signs on any parcel. As far as public services goes, the subject site has access to North Fairmount Avenue, which is a paved two-lane local street with sidewalks on both sides. North Fairmount permits unrestricted parking on both sides of the street. City services, such as sanitary sewer and water, currently serve the site, and Wichita Transit provides regular transit service near the site. Bus stops are located one quarter mile west along North Hillside Avenue, and within one half mile north on the Wichita State University campus. If we can go to the future growth map? The proposed amendment is non-conformance with the Community Investments Plan. Because the requested PUD amendment concerns signage and not land use, staff reviewed, uh, the locational guidelines of the Community Investment Plan. Under the heading Land Use Compatibility Guideline Two A, does speak to limiting adverse impacts of multifamily developments. It states that accessory dwelling units, duplexes, and small-scale multifamily developments can be appropriate in existing residential areas if appropriate site design limits adverse impacts on surrounding residential uses. The design of the buildings is compatible with existing residences, and the scale of the development is compatible with the intensity of the surrounding area. The large lighted proposed sign could be seen as sign clutter in the area detrimental to nearby properties. As far as the Wichita Places for People Plan, the requested amendment is not in conformance with that either. This plan includes Strategy Six to encourage infill and redevelopment that is contextual to the environment in which it is occurring, and this requested amendment would allow a type and size of sign that is not immediately present in the surrounding context, um, away from Seventeenth Street. It is also not, um, in compatibility with the Central Northeast Neighborhood Plan, although it doesn't generally address signage in the community. Um, the plan does state a goal to improve neighborhood signage, and this includes determining the type, style, and location of signs throughout the area, including neighborhood signs, entryway features, direction signs, area attractions, neighborhood watch signs, monuments, recreational signage, et cetera, and then also to coordinate with the City of Wichita Public Works, um, to obtain a copy of the rules and regulations. Staff does believe that this is specific to adding signage that identifies neighborhoods where, within the plan, and not speaking to signage that might be placed on multifamily residential. However, staff does believe that the proposed, proposed signage is not congruent with the overall intention and desired goals of the plan. And then the purpose of the Wichita Sign Code includes creating a comprehensive and balanced system for signage that avoids visual clutter, promotes business opportunities, and preserves the community appearance. When approving the Wichita Sign Code, the City Council found that unregulated signage has harmful effects to the community and can result in visual clutter. Um, the site, the site is located from, away from an arterial roadway on a local street with primarily residential uses, and, um, the existing signage along this street is, is pretty limited. Staff finds that allowing the required signage would add a type and, and size of sign that would have harmful effects to the community, and is not in conformity with the policy of the Wichita Sign Code. If we can go to sight pics? So this is looking east across from Fairmount Avenue to the, um, into the property. Next picture. This is looking east into the site north of the property. Next picture. This is looking east to the site that is south of the property. Next picture. This is looking south, uh, into the property that is east of the property. Um, again, this is in the same PUD, and as you can see, uh, when I went out to take pictures, I did notice that the signage for these apartments, uh, do seem to exceed the fifteen-inch capacity that the, um, that the PUD text, uh, allows, and so, um, so that's, this is a separate case that is not allowing, if, if this is approved, this does not also approve this building itself. Next picture. This is looking south into the site with the property north of it also on. This is also, uh, where the sign is, is proposed to be shown, and I can show you the, the, um, rendering for that also. Next picture. This is looking west away from the side of the duplex. Next picture. And this is looking west away from the side of the parking lot for the site that we're discussing today. And then if you can go to the rendering for the sign that the, uh, applicant has provided. So this is kind of a, an idea of what the signs will look, like, the sign will look like if, if approved. So having said all of that, uh, staff does recommend denial of the application. These are based off the golden factors. Um, we haven't received any comments, and, um, DAB recommendation, just so you're aware, was to approve the sign amendment, uh, to the PUD, but with no, uh, LED component to it, no lighting. If the opinion of the planning commission is that it's determined to be appropriate, the planning commission should adopt alternative findings supporting approval, and is recommended that approval should be subject to the following conditions. Building sign shall not be eliminated, and the applicant shall obtain all applicable permits for the sign. And with that, I can stand for any questions.
Thank you. Brad, I understand that the applicant provided some additional information.
Yes.
I think the commission all has that. What was that? Could you repeat that real quick?
Yeah, and I don't think that they're part of this, um, PowerPoint. Um, I, I can let the, uh, agent for the applicant go onto those a little bit more.
Did you see what the applicant provided?
I did, but I, I don't recall offhand right now what they were, but I looked at them before I did send them.
All right, we'll let the agent applicant address it. Uh, Commissioner Nix?
Brad, I should probably know this, but does the color of the sign have anything to do, is it just the sheer dimensions of the sign?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the first part of that?
So does the color of the sign have anything to do with it, or is it just the sheer dimensions?
It's the dimensions.
This sort of blends in, uh, to the background, at least with, from, from my viewpoint, as opposed to say, if, if that bright orange that, yeah, is right below it.
Sure, the, the text of the PUD basically states that, um, it would, the, the sign code would apply to this, and the sign code basically states that the letters could only be fifteen inches in height or less, and these are four feet, I believe, and so we're looking at a three point two times difference in, in height of the lettering.
I only ask only because I can hardly see the sign from here, so.
All right, Commissioner Aldrich?
Yep. Brad, it looks like the nearest residential, uh...
Mr. Aldrich, can you speak?
I'm sorry. Brad, it looks like the, uh, the closest residential property that would be affected, uh, by the sign, uh, or if it's illuminated, whatever, would be along, uh, the north side of Seventeenth Street. What is that distance between, uh, where the side of the building, where the sign would be, across the parking lot, uh, to the, uh, residents?
Directly north of it?
Yes, sir.
If we could go back to the...
Yeah, go up to Seventeenth Street there.
Well, I, I can't, I can't, uh, you're running from here to Seventeenth Street? I, I, I don't have the ability to...
See, eight, sixteen.
But there is residential right here that is basically abutting the, the building that's being proposed.
Okay, uh, Meyer, I didn't realize that was a residential. Is that currently somebody living there now? Do you know?
I do not know.
Yeah, I didn't realize that was a residential building, so. Never mind that.
Any other questions for staff? Saying none, thank you. Will now ask the applicant and or agent to come forward. Please identify yourself as to which, and give us your name and address, and you'll have up to ten minutes.
Kim Edgington, agent for the applicant, PSC Consulting, twenty-five thirty-two North Cardinal Drive, Wichita, Kansas. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to kind of straighten out some of these issues. That residential structure immediately north of the apartment building has been vacant for at least twenty years. Um, it is not owned by my client, and I'm quite certain that it would not pass any kind of inspections or even be habitable at this point, so. And everything north of that property is zoned LC Limited Commercial Surface Parking that is owned by the university, and then north of Seventeenth Street is all college campus. So, um, some of the things that we would like to bring to your attention today is that this is a PUD. The reason for the PUD was to build in some inherent flexibility for future development. When the PUD was approved in twenty twenty, um, I, I was not part of the team at that time, uh, so, one thing that was really not addressed thoroughly was the issue of signage, and it was just left in that signage would be per the B multifamily zoning district. At that time, we weren't exactly certain how the property would end up be developing, so, uh, but did want to build that in through the PUD process so that we could come back to you, uh, like we are today in the future, and look at items such as this. Uh, we do, we have a property here that is facing a local residential street, um, so visibility is a little, is kind of difficult. Uh, so if you are driving along Seventeenth Street, it may be unclear as to what this building might be. Um, so this identification signage is really critical to attracting the clientele that this building was designed to serve, which are college students. Um, the, and it has proven somewhat of a challenge to, uh, get potential residents to find our property. So we set about designing a sign that was, uh, similar to what you might find on the campus, uh, that is just adjacent to this property. The, uh, Wichita State has very similar size and proportion type signs on, uh, their residential structures, so, uh, we did ask a local sign company to design that sign, uh, so that it would also be in character with the neighborhood. But the sign itself is quite proportional to the size of the building. Um, if we were looking at a commercial zoning district, uh, the building signage allowance would be twenty percent of the building facade, and here, this sign is approximately four percent of the building facade, so far less than what would be allowed under any kind of commercial, uh, designation, so. And then the lighting, I have, uh, we had handed out to you both, uh, by email earlier, and then in the packet that you have, the third page of that packet shows how that sign would appear as it's lit by the backlit halo lighting. And what's also important is to look at some of those pictures that I've also submitted of this general vicinity at night. This was not near dusk, this was full-on dark nine-thirty at night when these pictures were taken. And as you can see, there is a lot of light in the area. The parking lot lights, uh, in the parking lot to the north, the building itself has security lighting, the university, the tennis courts are continually lit, um, so all of those provide a great deal of light, and we believe that the lighting that would emanate from this backlit halo lighting is wholly insignificant compared to the lighting that is already there in the vicinity. The, uh, the, as the DAB voted, they felt like the size proportion of this sign was reasonable, um, that it fit the character of the building and the scale. So we have provided to you, um, some alternate findings of fact, where we have outlined each one of those, uh, golden factors a, as to how this proposal does meet your criteria for granting an amendment to the PUD. We do have here a property that my client has invested over six million dollars in this particular building, um, and the ability to market it effectively and fill the, all of the rental units, um, is critic, this sign is critical to achieving that. I have also submitted to you in that packet of materials, I believe it is on the, uh, fourth page, a map, a, an aerial view map of properties. Everything shaded in the red and blue are properties that are owned by my client. Um, since two thousand and five, my client has invested more than twenty million dollars in those red and blue shaded properties, um, which has served to fulfill the goals of several of the plans that were mentioned by staff, uh, being the Community Investments Plan, the Wichita Places for People Plan, and the Central Northeast Neighborhood Plan, which all encourage high-quality infill development, and that is precisely what my client has achieved over the last twenty years by this twenty million dollar-plus investment. He has... He has rehabilitated and remodeled structures where feasible. These are historic structures, so he had to work within the context of bringing those up to a higher standard. Where it was not feasible, where buildings had been left in such disrepair, is where new construction has taken place. So, my client is clearly invested in this community. And making his existing investments successful will help him to further invest in this community. And I would be glad to stand for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Kim. Commissioner Aldrich.
It sounds like your client's invested in a lot of other properties around there. Might want to look at investing in one more, just to the north right there. If it's been sitting that long, it could be their benefit.
Believe me, he has attempted to do so.
Yeah, because I'm sort of curious, and this is probably going to be a question for staff. How much emphasis and their reasoning for denial had to do with that particular property?
I think it did factor in just the fact that it is a residentially-zoned property. It has been divided up into essentially just rooms, individual, separate rooms. I believe there's eight rooms there, but as I said, it has not been occupied for at least 20 years.
And the reason for the lighting that you see around there, would you say that was strictly for the purpose of safety for the college?
Safety and security. I think, you know, it's definitely in the best interest of my client, the university, that that lighting be in place. And so, the lighting that is proposed for this sign, with it being a very subtle backlit halo, really is not going to have much of an effect.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Warren.
Kim, I just want to make sure I'm understanding this right. The, in the staff report, it says that you're requesting an LED and/or electronic message. We're just looking at a static sign?
Right, yes. Yeah, and one thing I think that Bear's mentioning is that the photos of the rendering of that sign make it appear as if that sign is already installed, and that that sign is not installed. Those were just very good renderings.
Commissioner Zembleman.
So, I don't suppose you have a mock-up of this sign in 15-inch letters, do you?
No, but that would have been a really good thing to bring because I think it would be almost impossible to see. If you could show me the picture of the front of the building, though, is, can we get to that?
It would be the one looking east. Looking east toward the site.
There it is.
There you go.
Those letters are 15 inches tall. So, if you could picture those, the scale of those letters on that building facade, they would essentially be almost impossible to read and dwarfed by the scale of the facade.
The Fairmount flats on the horizontal plane, not the 1728, yeah.
And those are not lighted.
Those are not lit?
They are not.
Okay. Commissioner Williams Bay.
Yes, if the, if the proposed sign is going to be five foot high.
Four foot.
Four foot, four foot high. And the light, the amount of lighting that's around there, is it really necessary to have the sign backlit?
Well, just really for nighttime purposes. And it's hard to light a black, because the color is black. It's hard to light a black sign. And about the only way you can achieve that is by doing the backlit halo lighting. And then, for that orange center to show through, to both be visible during the day and at night, lighting is really the only way to achieve that.
If that sign's four foot, four foot tall, I don't think there's going to, I'm not saying it at night, but in the other areas around there, really.
The, the backlit halo is just to give a little bit of emphasis, just so that it is visible at night and just to bring awareness that that building is there. There are a lot of college students that live there. Obviously, that's what the intent is. And my client has expressed that his residents say that when their parents are visiting from out of town, out of the country, that it is sometimes hard for them to figure out where, you know, where this building is. And this just will help, help with that visibility and help just attract attention both to this property and others that he has available that he has invested in.
One more question. The building across the street that has a sign on it, is that sign backlit?
Not that I'm aware. I, I have not seen that. And unfortunately, when I was out there taking pictures, I did not think to look at that. But I'm guessing it's not, or I would have probably noticed it some more.
They showed a picture during the presentation of the building across the street with the, do you know if that's?
That one?
Okay.
Are you talking, is this the one you're talking about, this, this sign here? Yeah.
Yeah, it's hard to tell.
I apologize, I do not know that.
Commissioner McKay.
Kim, during the presentation, you said that the DAB approved this request with the exception of the lighting on the sign?
Yes.
Do you know why they put that caveat in there?
Their concern was about potential future commercial development that could occur to the north of this, that by having a lighted sign on that building, it could potentially deter the desirability of that for commercial development. And that it could, and it could cause light pollution. And so, as you can see by those photos of the nighttime conditions, I don't know that that is actually the case.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Zembleman.
I just want to clarify something. The handout you gave us today, it says five foot tall on it.
And it is not, it is four foot.
Okay.
That was an earlier rendering, my apologies, we, I should have corrected that. It is a four-foot sign, or the, the letters are four foot tall.
Okay, thank you, good catch, Tony. Any other questions? Saying none, thank you, Kim, stand by. We'll see if we have any public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak to this case? Please come to the podium, give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to three minutes.
So, good afternoon, my name is Lonnie Barnes. I live at 2924 North Terrace Drive in Wichita, Kansas. So, when I talk about, let me back into my pointer here. This, uh, this is just their property, and I am this property right here.
Okay, thank you.
Across the street from me. We've talked about this property before when we had issues with the parking lot coming in next to me. And we, we allowed him to have that parking lot. And based on the PUD he got for the property over here on Bass, in here, and he just expanded that to, to go all the way around there and that portion of it there. So, guys, I don't, I've had this property since 82, this property across the street from me. Tom had owned that property almost as long as I had mine. This guy was probably about 85 years old. I think Tom has either moved on or sold, I think, I know it's been sold. I think the owners who brought it are out of state. They've come through here and they, they've gutted it out, cleaned it out, maintained it, the front and all of this. They're going to do something with it, in this portion of it in here. What that is, I don't know. Same thing when I come across here to my building in here, boxed in here on all three, three sides by WSU. And you know it from their, their 10-year plan, they're going to put three-story business and retail spaces in both these parking lots, coming up here, boarding up to that portion with parking in behind. So, I'm not against this development, nor am I fighting so much of his lighting in here, what he wants to do because proportionally, he sets back the same where I do. Where mine is residential, my future plans may be to go commercial myself in here this thing. So, whatever you're going to allow him, just going to put it on the record, said, if you're going to allow him to have lighting and stuff along there, then you open that up for me as well, and anybody else that wants to come along there. So, but not opposed to the signage lighting up because this whole area at some point in time is going to be very lit up in this area.
All right, any other, any questions for the speaker? Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Appreciate it. We'll bring it back to the applicant for rebuttal. You'll have up to two minutes.
Kim Edgington, for the record. I just do want to point out, Mr. Barnes's comments are, you know, the fact that this is a, an area that is in transition. There's a, there are commercial properties. This, you know, this is all commercial over here along 17th Street. To the east along here, there's a lot of commercial activity as well. So, this is not out of character with what one would experience with an area that has a mix of high-density residential uses, university institutional, you know, commercial uses that certainly is not out of character whatsoever.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Williams Bay.
I want to make sure I'm understanding. The DAB was okay with the sign, but with it not being lit, is that correct?
Yes, they were comfortable with the size, the scale, the placement of the sign that was proposed, that we have requested.
Without back being backlit.
And initially, the vote by the DAB was to approve the sign as we have submitted with the lighting. And that vote was a four-to-four vote. So, basically, a no recommendation. So, there, you know, there certainly was support for it in the, in the lighted form.
All right, thank you, Kim. Seeing no other questions, we'll bring it back to the board. Commissioner Warren.
I would like to say that I believe that the applicant has successfully answered the findings of fact. And I would move to approve the request as presented, including backlighting.
And to include backlighting?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the PUD amendment and to allow backlighting. We have a second, the motion was by Commissioner Warren with the second by Commissioner Joe Johnson. Call for vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously.
Motion passes 1301.
Oh, yes, we had, thank you. That was such a long time ago, I forgot about it. So, we did have an abstention from Commissioner Clontz. All right, and next item is 4.8.
Mr. Chair, I will be abstaining from this item.
All right, so, that the record show. And this is zoning quest 2025-14.
Yes, thank you. Once again, Brad Etherly, planning staff, presenting case ZON 2025-00014. For this case, the applicant is requesting a zone change from SF20 Single Family Residential to LC Limited Commercial. The subject site consists of one ownership parcel that is 7.493 acres in size and is located on the south side of West 53rd Street North and within one-quarter mile east of North Ridge Road, located specifically at 6811 West 53rd Street North. The applicants are requesting this zone change to allow the site to be used for the use of the office general. The subject site is developed with a single-family dwelling, and the applicants would like to build a second structure to use as an administrative office for their property management business. While the applicant does own the subject site, they do not live on the property. If the applicants did live on the property, then they would be permitted by right to use the property for an office as a home occupation. The applicants have also mentioned that they might at some point like to have small events on the property for office parties and meetings. Event centers in the county that are under 20 acres are allowed by conditional use in the LC District. If LC is approved, the applicant would need to apply for that conditional use should they decide to utilize that in the future. If at any point in the future the applicants would like to add an event center in the county used to the property, they can apply for that conditional use. Should the zone change request be approved, screening would be required per the Unified Zoning Code. The applicant would be required to screen on the west side of the, of the subject site at the time commercial use is developed. It's common for property owners to satisfy this requirement by installing a six-to-eight foot, six-to-eight foot solid screening fence. And Sedwick County does not have any landscaping requirements. Should the zone chess, zone change request be approved without a protective overlay, there would be an increase in permitted uses on the site, such as two-family and multifamily residential development at a density of 75.1 dwelling units per acre and commercial uses such as office space and retail. The requested zone change would alter the development standards as seen in the table in the staff report. The character of the neighborhood is rural residential with some commercial properties nearby. Property to the north across 53rd Street North is owned RR Residential District and was mined for sand and gravel extraction operations. That was with Con 2012 and Con 2007-25. It is currently undeveloped with a lake and was plotted in 2023 as residential lots. Based on site photos, it appears the property has a warehouse building that is not on a foundation at the front of the property, presumably to be removed from the property, and you'll see that in the, in the site pictures. Property to the south is owned SF20, is in agricultural use and developed with agricultural buildings. Properties to the east are zoned SF, SF20 and are developed with single-family dwellings. Properties to the west are zoned SF20 and are developed with single-family dwellings. And then, further west, approximately 500 feet, is a property zone GC General Commercial with a protective overlay limiting it to OW Office Warehouse District and Storage Outdoor and Vehicle Storage Yard as allowed in the GC General Commercial District. They are, that is developed with self-storage units. And then, further west at the corner of Ridge and West 53rd Street, about 1,000 feet away is an undeveloped property zone LC Limited Commercial. The subject site is not platted, and plating would be required before any commercial building permits are issued. And there are no other zoning cases associated with the property. As far as public services go, the site has access to West 53rd Street North, a two-lane paved county arterial street with no sidewalks on either side. The site does not have access to any rural water district, so water and sewer services are on-site. So, we can go to the future growth map. The requested zone change is not in conformance with the 2035 Wichita Future Growth Concept Map. It identifies the majority of the site as new residential and a small portion of the site as residential unemployment mix. And with the majority of the subject site being recommended for new residential, staff believes that incorporating a commercial enterprise at this location would not be consistent with the Community Investments Plan Future Growth Concept Map. The proposed zone change is not in conformance with the land use compatibility guidelines. Under the heading Land Use Compatibility, Guideline 1A states that higher intensity development should be discouraged from locating in areas of existing lower intensity development, particularly established low-density residential areas. Additionally, under the heading Development Patterns, Guideline 3A states strip commercial development along arterials should be discouraged except along established commercial corridors and highways. And if we can go to the site pics. This is looking south into the subject site at the single-family dwelling that's currently there. Next picture. This is looking west away. Next picture. This is looking north away from the site. This is the warehouse building that appears to be ready to be moved off the site. I can't say that for certain, but it, it looks like it's being prepared to be moved. Next picture. And this is looking east away from the site. And I think that's all of the pictures. Staff does recommend denial based off of the golden factors, including number three, which the proposed zone change could detrimentally affect nearby property by adding commercial use to a residential area, could potentially disrupt the nature of the area. The same proposed use could be achieved through the home occupation if the applicant did live on the property. As an alternative to the recommended action, should the MAPC decide to recommend approval, it is recommended that the MAPC adopt alternate findings supporting their recommendation, approve a zone change to GO General Office instead of LC, and then also add protective overlay number 453 to the property. And that PO language is added in the staff report for your reference. And with that, I can stand for any questions.
Thank you, Brad. Does anyone on the commission have questions for? Thank you, Brad. Does anyone on the commission have questions for Brad? Commissioner Miles?
Brad, can you clarify for me? So the building that you were showing, that's currently across the street, or it's on that particular property?
Correct. I believe, keeping it on this, I believe it's one of these two
Okay.
buildings, but I can't say that for certain either without getting on to the property. So this would be north across West Fifty-third Street North where that warehouse was.
So the, so the house that's currently sitting there, is that just vacant, or is it being used?
No, no, they're renting, they're renting it out. They would keep that and just build this as a, an accessory structure.
Brad, did you discuss the alternative option with the G O and the protective overlay with the applicant?
Yes, I have actually discussed this with the applicant in detail. So they're aware of the differences in all of the, the ways that it could be zoned with P Os between G O, L C, you know, with the possibility of event centers in the future. So all of that has been discussed.
Thank you.
Would that have to be a new application?
If you were to zone at G O, and they wanted to have an event center in this, in the county, they would have to rezone it to L C and then also get a conditional use. So that is a possibility. You could accept the applicant's request to zone to L C and then, in the future, if, if they want to do an event center, they could just do the conditional use.
But wouldn't it make more sense if they want to do an event center, just to do that for the specific use of an event center rather than us? I, I know that it had to use, have a conditional use, but I don't know.
Yeah, this is a, I actually, it would seem like a pretty simple case, and then it turned kind of complicated because of all the different scenarios that are involved. And, and so if, if you guys as the commission felt that this was an appropriate request, staff believes that G O would be more appropriate than L C at this time with that protective overlay. And then if they wanted to ever include an event center, then they would just have to rezone again to L C and get the conditional use. But you could also approve it as L C, and then they would just have to get the conditional use later.
Sam, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, just to address Commissioner Johnson's question in terms of whether a new application would have to be filed, in terms of right now, if they're asking for limited commercial, and it's your desire, the will of the board, to go lower with the G O, you have that discretion, and it doesn't require a new application in terms of going from L C to G O.
That's the answer I was looking for. Thank you.
All right, I misunderstood.
Yeah, we're good. All right. Seeing no other questions from the commission. Thank you, Brad. We'll ask the applicants to come forward, give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have ten minutes.
Hello, thank you for hearing me speak. My name is Derek Grandfield, and my address is four two zero two West Shoreline. And yeah, I think a lot of good questions. The main reason we wanted to go L C was because, you know, when we build our office, Brad, did you have the picture that I emailed? Okay, sorry, I should have printed that off. But it's a very nice-looking building. It's a larger building, so that cost is expensive to build these. So for us, we have a real estate business and a property management, management business, and we were going to run it out of there. I grew up just to, on this, my mom still lives right here, and then all of this land was my family's. And so we sold this to Jim, and I talked to him about what we were doing. You know, really, I don't want to put any, you know, large, commercial-type buildings there or anything. The, the reason for the L C was just for the ability, the ability to have an event center type thing. I, I mean, like a small venue where we could have a corporate-type event where we bring people in and, you know, entertain them. One of my good friends is a, he owns In the Bag Dry Cleaning, and he does a lot of, where he brings his customers in and has dinners and, you know, those kind of things. So just wanted to do it the right way and make sure we weren't, you know, out of compliance. So that was kind of where, you know, I think L C was a little higher than what I expected initially when we wanted to build our office there. But to do the venue slash event center, that was what it required.
Commissioner, Commissioner Aldrich.
So what, just out of curiosity, what's more important to you, having an event center or having your offices there?
I think our office is more important, but part of being able to do that and afford that was going to rely on being able to supplement the cost of that with paying for it by, you know, renting the space out for those type of events.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I did have, I guess, one more statement. On the, I'm new to this part of it. I, I do residential redevelopment and things like that. But on the protective overlay, if it was zoned L C, a protective overlay could make it where you can't put certain things on there, obviously, that aren't wanted, aren't, you know, with my mom living right there, I'll, I'll end up buying that property from her at some point. But I don't want that there personally. So is, those are things that could be protected that would help the community. Is that correct?
Yes, a protective overlay is a tool that can be used to put restrictions on a zoning and essentially ratchet down the intensity of that zoning to particularly, either you could prohibit particular uses, or you could only allow certain uses. But yeah, generally, you're correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Aldrich.
Yep, sorry, sir. I do have another question. Would you be opposed to general office zoning on that, or would that just be something you just don't want to go down, you don't want to do?
Well, I think, I think we would like to, yeah, we would like to have that. It, it's kind of, it's difficult when you look at the finances of it to say, okay, we'll build this building. And if you can't do anything except our own, you know, income with our company to pay it, it kind of changes things. It might make us go a different route. But...
Okay, so you're looking at doing an event center that you can, you can lease out or rent out to other deals. So you supplement some of your income then?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Warren, and then Commissioner Mater.
So make sure we're on the same page. If we were wanting to approve this, and staff's got alternatives here, says approve zone change to G O, general office district, and a protective overlay of four fifty-three. You've read that, and you're, you're in agreement with that? You can live with that option?
Yeah, I was, well, I, I guess the general, I guess, on one of the other alternatives that I saw, it looked like, you know, approve it as the L C, put a protective overlay, and then that allows for not only the office, but the, where I could have an event there if I...
Staff question, they can't, he couldn't have an event there? Okay.
No, sir. He would require, it would require a conditional use. And so at that point, there could be additional conditions that could be in, put in place on it specifically for the event center. So, but having it zoned L C gives him the, the opportunity to apply for that conditional use on that property.
But he can't do a conditional use on a G O for an event center. It has to be L C. Okay, I would think Commissioner Mater was first, and then Commissioner McKay.
And again, I think I probably missed this. What kind of occupancy are you thinking about for the event center?
You know, I was thinking just probably less than a hundred people. The spaces, it's a fairly open space on the bottom for the plans that we have, and on the second floor is kind of where our office would be. So we just thought, you know, less than a hundred would be probably closer to fifty, but...
What kind of parking will that take?
So there's quite a bit of space there on that where we would, we would be able to accommodate, I think, you know, I would say a hundred by fifty, you know, asphalt lot is kind of what we were looking at.
Commissioner McKay.
This is a question of staff, and then I'll make a call. If he would get this, if it would be zoned L C, could he do L C with like a protective overlay with certain conditions he can and cannot do?
So essentially, I think to satisfy his request at this time, which was for general office, but also setting himself up in the future to make an application for the conditional use, you could have it the same language, except you would just substitute L C instead of general office for, I, I'm sorry, L C, yes, instead of, yeah, general office. Now, part of the details, some of the questions that have come up have been, you know, about the parking and the size of the event center. All of that would, I would encourage you would be discussed during the conditional use if he chooses to apply for one. So right now, it's really, should there be an office use at this location that's not a home occupancy? And if you want to allow that, then you've got two zoning districts that have been part of the discussion so far. One is general office, and the other one is L C. Both of them could have the protective overlay placed over it, which would restrict it to all the uses in S F twenty plus general office.
You mean, he, if, if we would decide to, to make it L C, which is what his request is, we could make it L C with certain conditions, and that's all?
Right, like...
Without the conditional use?
Well, there is no conditional use on the table right now. So there would be no event center approved today if it went to L C. You could do L C with a protective overlay, and staff would recommend that it mirror the protective overlay in there, and the only substitution would be on condition number one, that it would be limiting everything to S F twenty, in addition to office general as permitted in the limited commercial district. So they would get an office, they would allow everything in single-family S F twenty, and it would given the base zoning layer to then come back in the future with a conditional use for an event center if they so chose.
Either way you say it, he's got to come back for a conditional use on the event center.
Commissioner Joe Johnson.
That sounds good, except I thought I heard you say you wanted the event center to be on the first floor of your office building. Is that correct?
Well, yeah, the, the office, it has, I should have brought the pictures, I'm sorry. I have it on my laptop if I can pass that around if you, if you wanted to. But so the building itself is about forty-five by seventy, and it has a place, since we have property management, well, you know, we have equipment that sometimes we use. So we'll put that on the little garage side. And then there's a big open space that's kind of like a half gym, kind of. And then in the back part is, the guy who designed it was more of like a weight room, but I'm not going to put that in there. But it's just more open space. And then you go up, and then that's kind of where the office space would be at.
The event center would be on the first floor?
Correct.
You need that to start with.
I, I guess I'm just trying, I'm trying to truly understand, because we've sat here numerous times and approved a zoning change for a specific use that then that property wasn't used for that specific use that we were sold, that it was going to be used for. And so I, it sounds to me like he wants an event center. The office may or may not be secondary to that. I'm a little bit uncomfortable with approving without specifically knowing really what the plan is.
But that would come back very, when there's a event center application, conditional use?
I, I get that. But then I, I just want to make sure that we truly limit what can be done with the limited commercial district, and that it doesn't end up, I mean, if it's a protective overlay, that's fine, but it doesn't end up with something totally different than what's been sold to us, like, like happened with the drive-in, when we sat here and we approved a use, and then next thing you know, that's, you know, the drive-in's going to be torn down. So...
And, and to that point, then, I would refer you to page four on the staff report. Number one that Philip read earlier, which is, uses shall be limited to those permitted by right in the S F twenty, single-family residential district, in addition to office general, which is the description of that office use, as permitted in the, and then limited commercial district or general office district, depending on what you choose.
Okay. I think we have all our questions for you, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Is there?
I, I guess that to answer your question, too, the office is primary for us. Just trying to understand how to offset some of the cost of that. That's kind of the biggest part for us, where we can, I mean, we're, we're in business and trying to, you know, make, make the least amount that we will have to pay out of our own pocket if it's possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for consideration and discussion. Yes, Sam?
Has Mr. Bill Johnson been gone the entire time? And if so, I would ask that you make a note on the record that he wouldn't abstain from voting.
Commissioner Bill Johnson has been absent from this agenda item and will not be voting. He did not give me a proxy. Commissioner Aldrich.
I'm going to try to make a motion here, so I may need some assistance to get it right. But I'd like to make a motion that we do have alternative findings, that we do approve the request for L C zoning, along with a protective overlay. For example, on item number one, this shall be limited to those permitted by right, and an S F twenty, single-family residential district, additional to office generous permitted in the L C zoning in, with the rest of the two, three, four, and five recommendations as, as they stand.
You just have to give what your alternative findings were that allowed for this motion.
So what findings are in support of your motion?
I think everything is fine. I mean, all the findings that staff gave, I don't want to say it's just the opposite. I do believe that all the findings, that it would be adequate for the area and, and so forth, if that makes any sense.
If, if I could, sir, I think what I've heard so far from the conversation is that for number three, the extent to which removal of restrictions would detrimentally affect nearby properties, that you don't, it sounds like there's a finding that you do not find that it would have an adverse effect or detrimental effect to those properties.
We haven't had any objections, have we?
No objections. Would that be enough?
Oh, yes. I mean, yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that, that language.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Joe Johnson was the second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay?
Nay.
We have one nay, one abstention
Abstain.
from Commissioner Clontz, and one absent from Commissioner Bill Johnson. Motion is approved. Next item, four point nine.
Awesome.
Christina Reith again with Planning Staff. This is case number Z O N two zero two five dash zero 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 one five. The applicant is requesting a zone change from single-family to general commercial district. This is a two-acre property located on the east side of North Greenwich, within seven hundred fifty nor, feet north of East Central Avenue. This is part of a larger property whose address is assigned to six hundred North Greenwich Road. This larger development includes a church, associated parking, and two drainage ponds. So this is on the southwest corner of the property, and they're requesting the zone change in order to allow an outdoor amphitheater. This is classified as an auditorium or stadium in the Unified Zoning Code. General Commercial is the most restrictive zoning district that allows the auditorium as well as church place of worship. If approved, the requested zone change will permit more uses on-site than the current zoning, namely high-density residential as well as commercial uses. The development standards are listed in a table in your staff report for context. This is subject to compatibility standards for side and rear lot lines of properties zoned multifamily residential or less restrictive when they're within a five hundred feet of a property zoned two-family or more restrictive. The outdoor amphitheater shall be subject to section four C six of the compatibility noise standards, which are summarized in your staff report. And screening is also required in accordance with section four B of the Unified Zoning Code. In accordance with the Wichita Landscape Code, the applicant would need to demonstrate that the existing or proposed landscaping meets a requirement of one shade tree or two ornamental trees per forty lineal feet of street frontage. In accordance with the Wichita Landscape Code, the applicant would need to demonstrate that the existing or proposed landscaping meets a requirement of one shade tree or two ornamental trees per 40 lineal feet of street frontage. Parking requirements are mandated by Section 4A of the zoning code. The auditoriums require one parking space for every three seats. Parking would be required in the event that the amphitheater is used by any other entity owned by the church, because this is, both the property, this parking lot here and this property here are both owned by the church. If the events are put on by the church, then the parking is sufficient. So, the subject site is part of a larger, nearly 20-acre site that has access to North Greenwich Road, which is a four-lane arterial street with sidewalks on each side, and a private street that stems from North Bristol Street, which is a two-way local street with no sidewalks. The requested zone change is in conformance with the Community Investments Plan. When we look at the 2035 Wichita Future Growth Concept Map, it identifies the subject site as appropriate for new employment uses. So, those are areas that will likely be developed or redeveloped by 2035 that constitute centers or concentrations of employment primarily in manufacturing, warehousing, distribution, construction, research, technology, business services, or corporate offices. The Community Investment Plan's locational guidelines provide a framework for decision-making regarding land use changes to encourage patterns of development. One of the land use compatibility guidelines states that industrial and major commercial land uses that generate pollution, odor, noise, light, safety hazards, and high levels of traffic should be located away from residential areas and develop the screening, buffering, and site design features sufficient to mitigate adverse impacts. So, when we look at the greater subject site, this is in the southwest corner, this is far away from the residential zoning, further northeast from the subject site, and they will be required to put in screening, buffering, landscaping, et cetera. Staff is recommending approval of this application subject to protective overlay number 455. The protective overlay states that the use of the outdoor amphitheater is limited to the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Events shall not include dancing or provision of alcohol or cereal milk beverage. Any required applicable licenses shall be obtained, and events conducted by any entity other than the church shall require that the on-site parking have proper zoning approval. This recommendation is based on the golden rules that are listed in your staff report. So, let's go ahead to some of these site photos, please. This is looking east away from the site. So, there's also concurrent vacation requests that I believe was just approved during Planning Commission as well subdivision to reconfigure the drainage of this area. So, even though it's looking east away from the site, soon we will have more of drainage there. Next slide, please. This is looking north away from the site towards the parking lot to be used for the proposed amphitheater. Next slide, please. This is looking northwest towards the site. This is the property occupied with the church. Next slide, please. This is looking southwest towards the site, towards a proposed location of the amphitheater. And again, they do plan on reconfiguring the drainage for this site. Next slide, please.
Christina, could you go back to the aerial that shows where the required screening may have to be?
Sure. Can we go to the aerial map, please?
Yeah, based on right there, where exactly would the screening requirements have to be, that'd be on the north side of that?
It is abutting, single-family residential zoning. So, everything you see here is single, sorry?
Saying if you go to the zoning map, even if it's under the same ownership, if commercial zoning is abutting residential zoning, the screening is required along the property line or to screen the commercial use. So, the entire site is zone SF-5, so anywhere is abutting SF-5 zoning requires screening, even if it's under the same ownership.
Sorry, everything in white.
Okay, yeah, it just seems like that's an awful long ways away. So, then they'll have to put it right along the property up there by the residence to the north.
It would actually be screening along the commercial...
The church is located on SF property.
Right, I get that, but I'm just trying to figure out why screening would have to be required, because you look at the distance between where the highlighted area is, where they're wanting to do in that. I mean, it just seems like it's a long...
It's not based on residential uses, it's based on zoning districts. And so, even though the church is on, is used on the site and it's not a non-residential use, it is in single-family residential zoning, and even though it's under the same ownership, they would have to provide screening because the zoning code requires it along the district boundaries between commercial and residential zoning districts.
Okay, thank you.
Because if the church ever sold that GC parcel to somebody else...
Correct.
It's not the same ownership anymore.
Correct.
Thank you. Sorry, Christina, were you done?
Yes, that concluded my site photos. Thank you.
We kind of jumped the gun on you a little bit there.
It's all right.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams, may?
That screening would be landscape screening, right?
The screening is provided by a fence. The zoning code does allow for some to have a higher intensity of landscaping to satisfy the screening requirement. They would just have to meet the details of that, of how that's listed in the zoning code for using landscape only. So, it does not have to be a fence, they can use landscaping, but it's a higher requirement than just the minimum landscaping requirement by the landscape code.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, thank you. Last the applicant and/or agent to come forward, please identify yourself as to which and give us your name and address for the record. You'll have up to 10 minutes, please.
Hey, good afternoon, Brian Lindback, MKC Engineering, 411 North Webb Road, on behalf of the owner and applicant. I would also share that I am a member of this church and so I've, and school, this generally is a school, this is generally the church, but it all functions as one entity. This is a soccer field and lots of outdoor activities go on, on the premises. So, as the staff report talks about, we're looking to put in an amphitheater on this property. The amphitheater would sit roughly in here and it would use this area as well as some area reconfigured here as a mall, much like you would see over at Botanica and some other amphitheaters. We've very strategically placed it here so that the building would function as a screen to the neighborhood. We are very respectful to the neighborhood. In fact, we've had numerous events here in the past, pretty substantial events. We have a Fourth of July event, I think, I know of at least a couple people in here that have been to that event, and it's a wonderful event. We're actually making preparations for next year's 250th, you know, celebration of our country, and it'll be a substantial event, should this be approved. We've had, in that event, we've had a stage rented and brought in and had many activities going on. So, that's not the only event that we have, we have lots of other events at the church, community organization-based events. So, the goal is to simply have this amphitheater for the church use and then some other, you know, ancillary uses that would be supportive of the church's mission. I think as regard to screening, part of the reason why I didn't let this go on consent is because, two things, we're not going to put up a fence along this perimeter, I can just tell you that. It's not appropriate for what we're doing, it wouldn't look right, it'd be very odd. So, if it needs a few more trees in here, we do have a lot of trees already, we could certainly add a few more trees, but we will not be putting up any fencing around this The other problem we have is the protective overlay. You know, we will be serving communion with outdoor church services, and so this requirement for alcohol is not something that we're in agreement with. If you've been to this facility, it is an alcohol-free facility, so there are signs all over the place because there are no fences that prohibit someone from enjoying our facility, although we don't encourage that, but there are signs on the property that talk about no alcohol or tobacco use on the property. So, I think it goes without saying that it's not intended to have a nightclub situation here. And then, as for the dancing, I find that a little bit absurd as well because, you know, if we do have events here that someone chooses to dance, I don't think that's something that we're prepared to, you know, put signs up saying that there's no dancing allowed. I think that's, again, a little bit absurd. And so, I just asked that we either approve this without a protective overlay or defer the case until we can have some more dialogue with staff. Staff didn't consult me on some of these rules that they put in place. As for, you know, the permits and things of that sort, there's a lot of permits that go along with having an outdoor event of different sorts. So, those would be required no matter if we do it, you know, I guess it's pointless to put it in the protective overlay because we have to do it anyways. So, as far as the parking, for those larger events we've had, we've had off-site parking and I think we would continue to do so. But those are, I would say, just about every event, well, every event that I know of that we would have here would be sanctioned by the church because we would have leadership and folks that are part of that event. So, I don't know if we have an issue with a conditional use at that point for parking, but I think that concludes my comments and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Brian. How long have you had the staff report?
I've had it about a week, well, about a week, last Friday is when I got it.
You knew what the staff recommendations were and you had opportunity to visit with them about what they were putting in it, correct?
Yeah, it's very difficult to get ahold of staff, I'll tell you that much.
You had the opportunity, though, correct?
Yeah, I did reach out to staff and didn't hear back.
Okay. Mr. Whittle?
So, can you tell me when you reached out to staff?
I've reached out to staff a number of times, I've talked to Christina. I've actually, before we even filed this case, I had numerous conversations with staff and none of these items were discussed to that degree.
But after you got the staff report, when did you reach out to Christina?
I spoke to her last week. All I'm saying is, if you want to defer this, I'm okay with that, but we don't want to have a protective overlay because...
Did you propose the deferral before today's hearing?
No.
Okay.
No, I'm bringing that up to you guys, let you guys just choose.
Any other questions for the applicant?
If it helps, I would be, I would offer up a conditional or a restrictive covenant that would bind the two properties together, if that is a concern, that there's no intention of ever selling this property separate from the church, but if it helps to solve that issue, I could...
It would have been nice to have that before this hearing and you had ample opportunity to visit with staff on that. So, just understand, I'm a little frustrated by what could have happened and hasn't.
Well, I'm also very frustrated that staff doesn't communicate with us, so.
Duly noted.
Just for clarification, when we send the staff report out, that is also when we send the staff report to you, to where there's not necessarily an opportunity to change the protective overlay or to change staff recommendation after the staff report is...
There could have been discussion as well, though.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Oh, sorry, Commissioner Miles. There you go, now I see you.
So, I guess the one thing that I have question about is, in the background, it says the outdoor amphitheater shall be subject to Section IVC6 that state that no sound amplification system for projecting music or human voices shall be permitted. So, how do you have an amphitheater and have no sound amplification occur?
It will have sound amplification, it just won't be heard at the 500-foot mark.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to hear or comment on this case? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board.
I was going to make a motion for approval without the protective covenants, but if the commission would rather, I would make a motion to defer so it can get worked out ahead of time.
Second.
Which one is it? Which motion is it?
I didn't make a motion. I said I wouldn't, if you wanted me to, I'd make it that way.
Yeah, go ahead and make that, Joe.
To defer?
Yeah.
Okay, I move to defer.
Sorry, I thought you were deferring.
Do we identify a date for the next, do we need to identify a date for the deferral?
In two weeks.
Two weeks, is that enough?
Do we get that done?
Can we get that done in two weeks?
As staff.
I would just point out that two weeks is actually one week because by the time we get together and then mail out the packets and everything, it's...
Okay.
The next possible dates are May 22nd or June 12th.
I think they, really, times are the essence because they'd like to get this done in time for, is that right? In time for any event.
Well, the 250th anniversary is the July 4th of 2026.
Yeah.
That's what they are preparing for, it's not July 4th, not this summer.
Thank goodness.
So, the next meeting after the 22nd is June 12th?
Correct.
Okay, before we finish, is this Jermaine to this motion? Mr. Dill? Okay.
So, my question is, why do we try and follow by deferring this versus discussing the protective overlay and taking action?
Well, I think there's some concern about the screening that needs to be resolved.
About the restriction of alcohol.
Restriction, the alcohol, dancing, and then, just also, the long-term protection of this being a GC zoning, and if the church doesn't own it in the future, then that GC allowance, that next owner could do whatever they wanted without anything and the church would be subject to that. So, I think some of that deed restriction needs to be talked through, the zoning or the screening, and then the alcohol and the dancing, and the overlay, protective overlay, the hours, too, right? So, I know.
So, I guess my concern or question is, are these better to be reserved by talking with staff or to talk it out among the commission today?
Good question. Commissioner Mater?
We've all sat through, and a lot of you more than I have, trying to solve problems here, and the confusion back and forth sometimes is overwhelming, and I think it happens a lot. And I've never found staff to be difficult to work with. I can't imagine there isn't something that could be mutually solved here if we give them some time to do it. I think the parameters have been recognized at this point, what are being asked of them.
Any other discussion? So, yes, Mr. Whittle?
So, just to make sure, so if we go into discussions, then things that we want to discuss between staff and the applicant are screening, also alcohol...
Dancing.
Dancing. And is that it, or parking, sound?
I think they have more of a problem with sound coming from the street to the amphitheater than the other way around.
Well, I just don't know what the distance is from where this amphitheater is going to be to those properties there on the right. You know, I'm always concerned about the impact on existing residences and sound because sound carries.
I would also like to understand the deed restriction opportunity, so that GC would be tied just to that use for the church and not any other use. If a different owner changed, it would go back to SF-5?
Mr. Chair, did you mean restrictive covenant, the proposed?
Yeah, yeah. Restrictive covenant, not deed restriction, thank you.
And the issue of alcohol, are you talking about restricting them from offering communion out there? You already addressed that to us.
So, the, we're talking about item number two of the protective overlay. The amphitheater by nature of the use allows for events with entertainment. We were essentially looking to differentiate between an amphitheater providing an outdoor entertainment venue and an entertainment establishment. And so, where the dancing comes, I understand your point, because we kind of talked about it internally of like, nothing can stop somebody from coming to a concert at an amphitheater and dancing in this... of like, nothing can stop somebody from coming to a concert at an amphitheater and dancing in this stance. That's not their point of dancing. It's not like they face zoning enforcement. It's that, an entertainment establishment slash nightclub in the city is a venue for which people show up to have a dance. It is a dancing establishment providing entertainment for partying, essentially not. We're having an outdoor event for people to come and be a spectator and possibly dance to the music. There's a difference there. Entertainment establishment, you're not there to be a spectator. At an amphitheater, you are there to be a spectator. The dancing that happens at a concert is not the concern. It was more, number two is to differentiate it between being an entertainment establishment slash nightclub in the city. Does that help? So and the idea of prohibiting of alcohol and seal marked beverage was not prohibitive, the religious right, nor do I think we could even through zoning. It was part of that differentiation between an amphitheater and an entertainment establishment.
Got it. Commissioner Warren?
I would like to have an option for a waiver on screening.
That would require a variance. Or they can accomplish it with landscaping.
Well, I'm looking at the overhead right there, that the building itself creates quite a buffer between the residential to the.
Right. It satisfies some screening in some places, but there would need to be some level provision or other action taken for other places.
Right.
And the other option is that they could apply for a PUD.
Okay.
Commissioner Williams-Bay?
Oh, I just have a question. Would the church allow any outside groups to use the amphitheater?
Thank you. If there was an outside group, that would be, it would be a sanctioned event that would be by the church. I know that for a fact, this time next year, we hope to have Wichita Grand Opera playing at this new amphitheater if it gets approved. So I know that is a goal, so, but that would be a part of, it'd be a part of the church venue, if you will, that would be providing access to that. So, but I don't, you know, we're not really in the business to rent the facility out to different organizations. It would be groups that would be internal to the church. That would be, we've also done like that, the community events there. So if you say outside organizations, I guess that would be a community event.
So that could all be handled in a protective overlay? Having to them to not renting it out to other organizations or groups or might want to serve alcohol or something?
I don't know if you could do it based on how they use it that way, but what you could do is you could limit the number of events, you could limit the hours of events.
That's why we don't do this here, and we let staff and the applicant work, send the stuff out.
That has been my complaint about this whole operation is it's just been shoved into our plate to, so we're stuck in a situation where we have to discuss it in this manner unless it was presented to us prior to presenting the report. So that has been my complaint about the situation, and I understand your frustration, Chairman. So I'm also irritated.
Yeah, well, you're the applicant, so you've got to walk through the process and.
And I have.
Okay.
I have walked through the process.
So we have a motion on the floor and a second to defer this to.
I was gonna say, can we clarify the date?
June 12th meeting, correct?
Yes.
All right, and we go in some direction to staff to meet with the applicant. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. That is our end of our agenda today. Have a great Mother's Day for the moms in the room. We're adjourned.